Okay, it's 6:30. I'd like to call this meeting to order, verify compliance with open meetings law and adopt the agenda. Please stand and join me in the pledge of the flag.
No matter.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. Item three is comments from the audience regarding agenda items. As a reminder, comments can only be made about items listed on the agenda for this meeting. This is the only time. Audience members may comment on current agenda items during this business meeting. For addressing the board, please state the agenda item number that you're speaking about, your name and your address. You may speak once for a maximum of five minutes. Any comments? Yes.
My name is Jesse.
Is the green light on?
Yes, it is.
Awesome. Thank you. Sorry.
My name is Jesse Stahoviac. Address is 9620 West Barnard Avenue, Greenfield. I want to discuss or talk about item seven E. Just want to, I'm just hoping that it gets reviewed and approved for today and so it can be implemented going forward.
Okay. And again, that's regarding the early enrollment, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, thank you. We have no items for number four, gifts, donations, or recognition tonight. Item five is on consent agenda. Consent agenda items are approved all at once and are one meeting approval items. Item five A is approval of June vouchers and vouchers payable. Five B is approval of May 22nd, June 7th, and June 12, 2017, school board meeting minutes. Item five C is approval of personnel recommendations. Item five D is approval of 2017-18 CISA contract. And item five E is approval of the 2017-2018 Southeastern Wisconsin School Alliance Resolution and Agreement 66 dot 0301. Would anyone like to remove an item?
Item C, five C.
So we're going to remove five C, okay. Anyone else like to remove an item? Okay, so a motion to approve items five A, five B, five D, and five E.
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. So item five C, John?
I just wanted to welcome the new folks on and also thank the folks that are leaving for their service. I'm not familiar with two of them very well, but Colleen Roth did a lot for our gifted and talented program, which was very important. So I wanted to thank, thank them for their contribution to the district.
Okay, thank you, John. Any other comments related to that? Okay, then a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item six is reports and discussion. Six A is facilities planning, ongoing discussion. And Dr. Olson will lead the discussion of the survey results and elementary grade configuration.
So thanks you to a lot of the board members attended last Thursday, or is that the Thursday before? Thursday before, on June 15th, the hopes for a Whitten graduate and looked at the survey that was there. So what you see was available to you was the survey. For those of you who were there got that handled, but that's also to take a look at it. I also made available to the board all the comments, which are a lot of pages, and I'm not sure if you've had an opportunity to go through all of them, but right now we've provided them. And so we'll talk about how we might provide those comments in terms of that, if to the public, if we summarize those, but there's a lot of pages in terms of that. And I think, you know, sometimes people are able to elaborate, so that helps a little bit. I often wish that we could, you know, when people answer, you always want to ask them, "Well, why did you respond that way?" And you can't always match up a comment to that because I think sometimes it'd be interesting on how people did that. But I do think it gives us some perspectives on that. So the survey covered things in terms of programs and services and curriculum, and that'll help us with our strategic visioning as we move forward. There were also questions related to facilities and our elementary grade configuration. So wanted to share with the board our plans in terms of all of that. So wanted to take all of the planning that we've done in 2016 and 17 with all of the focus groups, with the personalizing learning cohorts and all of that, and put it into sort of a strategic visioning report to the, to the public. Up until this point, the board has seen PowerPoints or bulleted lists of things, but want to put it into a, like, you know, maybe like a 10-page booklet that talks about the community involvement or input and include the surveys, some summaries. And then the appendices obviously would be the surveys themselves as we look forward in terms of what that looks like. So that's the input piece of it. What I think, so met with some of the administrators last week, but some of the work this summer that we need to look at really is the output. We don't currently have a dashboard that we're looking at regularly. I know the data has been presented, you know, like how are ACT scores doing, or how are we doing on AP scores, but putting it out there in terms of we want to move the needle on whatever it is and having a metric to look like that is and prioritizing it. Earlier this year, in December, I shared with you the, the concept of redefining ready, and that was the same concept we shared with the legislators at the Forward Thinking Breakfast about having a new way of looking at that school report card for school districts really looks at just test scores. Redefining ready is a movement across the country of looking at other indicators to know how we are preparing for students after high school and some other things that might be on there. Things that were included, just to refresh your memory a little bit, are things like attendance, community service, some of the workplace learning, industry credentials. We also looked at, we know that ACT will tell you, one of the number one indicators for success after high school is how students do in an Algebra II class and some of those other pieces. So all of those are not currently on the state school report card. And there's a lot of conversations with districts across the state, and some of them in one of our neighboring districts has sort of been the leader in that about what they're putting out there for the public to talk about other metrics. So we have a, you know, I would say somewhat of an obligation to our community to talk about how are our students doing in all of those areas and what are we doing to improve it. So one of the things that we want to look at, now that we've done a year of inputs of getting that, what are we actually going to value and what are the outputs going to be? Are we trying to increase AP participation? Are we trying to increase the pass rates of AP exams? Are we trying to increase our composite ACT score? Are we trying to get more students having some work-based learning opportunities, whether that's job shadowing or apprenticeships or whatever it is? So we now have to focus on the output because we can have all of this input, but if we don't, if we're not trying to move the needle on something specific or measurable, that's going to be one of our struggles. So to start to look at where we are and benchmark that, I, you know, pulling all of that together. So we don't have some of the data, we can pull it together. How do most, what percentage of our students take an Algebra II class and how do they do in an Algebra II class? I don't have that readily available, but that is, that's one of the number one indicators in terms of that. So I think that that will lead us to some of our district goals in terms of that because we have to look at what the data currently says. And I think it became a little bit clearer to me after the June 15th evening that a lot of people couldn't talk data as a district right now. They weren't, they didn't have that working knowledge at the tables. We couldn't accurately talk about our, either if it was our demographics or achievement data, or what it is that we're trying to move the needle on. Like, that wasn't a common language that we all talked about. So I think we have to figure out, we spent so much time in the input and getting that, we have to eventually say, what do we want our outputs to be? And I think that led to that question about what is Whitten known for? Like, what is that thing? You know, do we want co-curricular participation? We know that there's a high correlation to student success, the more co-curriculars they're involved in, those types of things, or band, or whatever those things are. So I think we have to define that, and that's really our next step that I think that the board needs to have some piece of it in. So I'm hoping through July, through administrative work and pulling together some of that data to bring forward to decide what are our outputs and revisiting that redefining ready framework and sharing with you what some of the other districts are doing. You know, if, if we feel there's a strong value in community service because we know some of our service organizations, whether it's National Honor Society, or have some of those components in there. So I think it's putting those out there and deciding that's where we're going and then watching the, what are our current percentages of students that do that and the deciding how, what's our goal for a year to actually start doing that, set annual goals in terms of that. So that's really what we're looking at for the next piece of the strategic visioning piece for the academic programs and services. So it's disaggregating all of that data from the comments and from programs and services and curriculum where the biggest gaps are, but also eventually we have to put some metrics around what it is we're trying to improve. Without that, we can just talk and talk all we want and say, "We're doing a good job," but we're going to have to have some data to sort of support that. So tonight I wanted to focus on the, the facilities piece of it and the elementary grade configuration slides. And so I think, I think there are some implications under the questions of where the people who responded to the survey, which is about 629 people, you know, the, the very top thing was making sure that we update our classrooms to be, to, to match the curriculum and technology needs. And I think that you saw where some of the other priorities fell in terms of that, and I think that will be helpful. Mike and I met, we had a meeting last Tuesday with Bray Architects to sort of look at that and debrief from that Thursday night. I think the one question that lies out there in terms of where they are in their planning and how as we start to move down this road, we need to solidify is that elementary grade configuration. And as I said in the beginning, I have no preference in terms of that, but I do think we need to vet through that process. This is our time to make sure that we do the research through either one of those and not just say, "Well, we decided to go that way" without really knowing it. This is the opportunity to do that. But we talked about timeline as I shared one that evening, and I think by late August would be a determination as we start to formulate what the question is or exactly what are we doing with facilities that we'd need to sort of have an answer around what that looks like. If you look at the data, I don't want to say it was evenly split, but I think that you can sort of look at how that, that survey, when you look at between staff and parents, but four options. So you had about 30%, 29% of the overall people said that they want to maintain the current elementary grade configuration. 21% said reconfigure it to the new, and then that was a limit, that was listed there. And then 27% of the people said, "I can go either way. Doesn't matter to me." And 22 people, 22% of the people said, "I just need more information before I cast a vote." So if you took the 27% of the people and added them to either one of them, meaning they really don't have an opinion either way, and pulled that out, and we have 22% of the people that are saying, "I just need more information to make a decision," it sort of looks like a split in terms of where people are right now. So I don't know if I was hoping for more of a definitive answer either way. I don't know that the data right now does that. So I wanted to have a conversation with the board about what to do with that data because we do need to give guidance. It will become an issue in terms of, as we move forward with facilities planning and referendum talk about what that looks like. Our architects do need to have some direction in terms of that. I would, I think, this is my opinion, is that we should, anybody who's interested in having the conversation and learning more about it, be able to participate in it and bring back what I would call a suggestion to the board to consider. It seems like there are people who are wanting more information, and so I don't know that, you know, what that means in terms of that. I would say that it's a pretty short timeline. I know that there, there is a board policy related to an advisory committee with a very specific purpose. I think this is a very specific purpose. I don't know that I would limit it to just a certain number of people. I would say anybody who wants to be part of this could. I would say in order to sort of, you know, you don't want people to just pop in for an hour here and there. You want them to be part of the whole process. Talked to both of the elementary principals who are on vacation tonight prior to that, and they also feel like, you know, the learning process will give us at least a solid answer and we can base it on learning about yes or no to move forward in that right way. So right now it seems like it's unsettled because if we would say we're going to keep it the way it is, you have, you know, also a lot of people who are saying, "Look at changing it at least," or "At least I want more information." So I don't know that without doing more research to make a decision either way will be satisfying to some people. So this is a discussion point that I would like some input on in terms of what the board says.
Do you have any data as far as successful, in, successful academics that with the configuration, not that we currently have?
Yeah. So I did some research on it, and most of the research is what I, what is called inconclusive research on it because there's a lot of variables that are involved in it. So I think you need to look at each context differently, but the research was inconclusive at any grade configuration. They looked, no matter if it's a middle school, 5'8" or 7'9", all of that stuff. The research is really inconclusive in terms of, if you're looking at student achievement data, even fiscal implications, which are going to be different at each part of it. So it would be, you know, it'd be, it'd be hard to find some data either way that supports either grade configuration. So I looked as much that was available out there in terms of educational research that's on it. So some of the pieces are, I think, for some of the people that we've heard, they just want to know, if they had more details on how we would configure it, things like transportation, for example, would we have all kids K5 get dropped off at the current Hales Corners location and then we would transport them to the other one, or is that an extra stop that a parent who had children in multiple buildings would have to make? I think that's a question that if people had that answer, they could answer either way. That's an example of just making a decision and going with it. I think that those were probably the number one concerns, is that it's one extra building that a family who has multiple children at different ages would have to make. That seemed to be the number one concern. Interestingly enough, at the focus groups, verbally, people said there weren't differences between the elementaries. Clearly, there were some opinions when you read the comments on elementaries. One of the things that that does is it levels that whole, what could be perceived or real differences in education received at different grade levels. I mean, that's the, you know, whatever that is. Geographically, we're not a very large district in terms of where our buildings are located. We really don't have neighborhoods that would disassociate you based on that. We really don't. I mean, I think there are some districts that their school is clearly in a neighborhood. That's really not the case here. You know, in terms of staffing, it would make it easier right now to, with the seven sections, to be able to, you know, one school right now, one grade level in one school has got very different class sizes than another building. You'd be able to sort of proportionately do that across a grade level. Developmentally, in terms of child stuff, you'd be able to do it. We've talked a lot, and even with the architects, I don't know that we're, there's a cost savings or a cost expense on either one of those models. There's not going to be one that slants either way. So from a fiscal standpoint, that's really not going to be. I will tell you that I think if we decide that this grade, if, if a change in grade configuration should happen, that decision should be separate from a referendum decision. People are going to affiliate a decision, if it's an educationally sound decision, right, it should not be based upon a refer, because then it's going to become an emotional issue that the only reason we're going to referendum, people are going to associate the reason we're going to referendum is to do a grade configuration, and that's not why we're doing it. So I think that that issue should almost be like, we either are or we aren't. We go to referendum and it passes or it doesn't. And if we felt that that was the best way to education, educationally move things, that should happen regardless. Because always people are going to affiliate those two decisions, and they're really not. It gives us an opportunity to design differently, but if, if that's the way we should do it. So I just want to be very clear on that. I think people, in referendums, what they would tell you is that if sometimes you're trying to make a switch, don't make it contingent upon, you know, they do that sort of that, if you don't, we're going to have to cut whatever. And that's really not, it's not an ultimatum here. And we have to be very clear on that.
So if the data doesn't lean one way or the other as far as academics, if the cost doesn't lean one way or the other, why the heck would we do it?
I think anecdotally, some of the reasons that I just told you in terms of staffing and class size and that, and that's going to be more from a system level, a parent isn't going to see that. They're going to tell you when the class size gets up to 26, they're not happy, and they like that the third grader who goes to the other school, they have their class sizes at 20. So they're, they're going to always see it from their parent head, as they should. From a system level, there are some things that we can do in terms of staffing or, or those other pieces that we would say that there are some things that lean one way or the other. I, I think that that, I think that that's, that's the answer, Quinn, in terms of it. Yeah.
Then I would ask Nancy and Stephanie, because you guys were on the board two administrations ago that brought this to the, to the people. What was behind it? We know that it was very mixed at that time, too. What was behind the administration's decision to move it forward?
It was exactly what Lisa said, leveling out class sizes, having all the grades together, having all the teachers in one place that can collaborate together in one building rather than having second grade teachers here and second grade teachers here. It just, it was exactly what Lisa said. And we had the same concerns at that time that parents are saying no.
And the conclusions that, that I drew, they were the same, the same issues. It was timing, it was transportation, it was after-school care, it was what do I do if I've got kids in more than one building and how am I going to transport? And, and the conclusion I came to at the time is that there isn't ever going to be a good time to reconfigure grades. They're just different. So we have to, if it's something that we're going to put forth, like Lisa said, we have to commit to that philosophy separate from anything else and have good reasons for doing it, but make it separate from anything else. Maybe there isn't, there isn't going to be a good time to do it. That's what needs to be done.
So you covered a lot of ground in your answer, so there's a couple of things I want to back up to. So just to clarify, you're, you're saying that, you know, if they have kids in multiple buildings. Well, they, many do now, but the thing is, if those two buildings have the same start time, now you're talking about a whole different level of complication.
No, I'm, yeah.
And if they don't have the same start time, now we're talking potentially four different start times in the district. So, for four schools. So that, that can be an issue, and of course, they're going to see it from the perspective of how it affects them managing their, their house and what they think of the education for their, for the children as they should. And of course, just to clarify, the other thing you mentioned was to not tie it to the referendum so it would be decided by the board, not by the taxpayer, not by the voters.
Well, sure, because it, sure.
I mean, that's the, it's cut to the chase. That's, that's what it says.
Sure. Yeah.
To be decided by the board, not the voters.
I believe that was the case last time.
Yes.
Yeah, right. Because that's an educational decision. If, had this been a fiscal, like, if we would've said, "Hey, you can save $10 million by doing that," then maybe it does become more of a taxpayer type of issue. But we know that, right now, the people who are most concerned about that is children or parents who are going to have kids coming into elementary or who are currently in it, right? Community members that kids have graduated 10 years ago, or if this is my, I only have children in high school. They may be interested, but to have a true vested interest, you have a pretty, you know, a specific group of people right now.
Yeah, there, well, that's, that's what we have Stephanie doing.
No, I'm just, I, I see that the reasons for doing it, even class sizes, smaller classes, it's always been a perpetual piece of conversation. Nobody likes having 20 kids in a class and they're excited when they get to one. And I understand the staff likes it when there's those kids in the room, the parents think it's great. And the kids don't have a problem with it either when there's less competition for physical space. I'm wondering if it's enough. It wasn't the last time. I wonder if that's enough to have community support for this kind of a group, knowing there's no perfect time to do it. And I wonder, I just wonder if it's, if it's worth doing, if it's enough with reality.
Right. And that's why I'm just saying, the data is sort of inconclusive in terms of what we're hearing. I don't know if the survey was done last time, but, you know, part of me wished it would have been like more, like a very clear answer. The fact that it's sort of all over the board is sort of like, ah. You know, there are 21% of the people overall that are saying, and it was interesting to look at the, the separation between staff and, and parents, too, in terms of how those, those looked at the data. But listen, I get it. The other part that I think that we have to do even prior to referendum is with some of the new building and how, the residential piece, where the boundaries, like, if we were nearing having to redistrict our elementary schools right now, that would also be another impetus for doing that. That's something that I think we need to look at right now because with the new building that's happening both in Greenfield and some of the residential places that are popping up right now, I think we need to seriously look at that because, and it has nothing to do with the open enrollment piece of it, but both Chris and Lori have talked about where some of the new building is happening and which district they fall in. If that, I mean, if that's going to continue to cause one building to have an improportionate number of students, that's another thing to look at. I don't have an answer here right now, but I think it's something else to study, which we'd have to do pretty quickly, and, you know, talking with the city of Greenfield in terms of what they're projected for, some of the housing that's supposed to be going up in a couple of different places.
So you also spoke about a timeframe.
Mm-hmm.
What is that timeframe?
Well, we talked to Bray and they felt, I mean, so part of it is really, they feel like they can move forward with conceptual plans, sort of having both of them out there because really the only differences in the two buildings would be, for example, with gym space, which is different for third through fifth graders than it is for kindergarten through second graders. That's really the only thing that they would be looking at in terms of that because the space at HCE needs to be, I mean, most of its ADA just not very convenient. And that really is not related to if it's a K5 or a K2 or 35. That's really irrelevant. So they can right now move forward with that. The decision point becomes is when you start putting the question out for the public, which would probably show up in the second survey that we've talked about doing the end of September, early October. Because the public is going to want to know that. But if you're going to separate the issues, that's important to start communicating those two separate issues. So when you talk about a timeframe, doing a pretty intense summer, two-month look at this, visiting, talking to districts that have done K2, 35, like pros, cons, what are those, bringing those in, if people want to go visit that, and then just locally, just brainstorming all of the, you know, if it, is it neutral? Is, for every pro, there's a con, or whatever it is, and just sort of deciding, "We studied it as well as we can, and this is our decision, and we feel comfortable with that moving forward regardless of what that is."
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Well, I was just going to say, I wasn't surprised at the survey results. I expected that to be that way. And I think that's something else that we could do is we could look at other options of childcare and some maybe less expensive options of childcare. You know, I know the Greenfield School District now has their childcare provided through the Park and Rec program, and it saved the parents a lot of money doing it that way. So we could look at the Park and Rec programs to see if that would be better. And also if we had a plan for transportation ahead of time.
Yep, right.
That would, ahead of, when we have more conversations about it, I think parents would be able to put their head around and go a little bit better.
And I would agree, and to John, to address both of those questions, as we've been talking with our bus company, part of the issue this year and why we run a couple of extra routes is the start times of our schools. If we more strategically placed those, we would be able to, that's why the one elementary route was always late getting to HCE because there wasn't enough gap time between our schools. And so I think there, I mean, so that's, it's a related issue while we can change start time and end time at whatever it could. I think that, I think that's what the people who, the 22% of people that said, "I don't know. They want those answers."
That's exactly where I was going to go.
Yeah.
Is what Nancy's getting at is forming up more of a plan. And if we have more of a plan, that takes care of that 22%.
And you can see which way they go.
Say they want more information. You can see which way they go. I think that's what we need to do next.
Well, you know, I know the bus that went past our house maybe had two kids on it. Like, well, that seems like a big waste.
But you don't know where in the route it is.
We're getting to the end of the route.
They're at the end of the route when they come to our house.
But I see them, buses picking up kids on Edgerton right up here. They can't be bringing them here. There's a child right up here on Edgerton, three or four houses down from 116. They can't be bringing them here, I don't think. Are they not when they're that close?
Two miles is the radius unless it's a hazardous.
It's a hazardous.
If it's a hazardous, if it's been zoned hazardous, then they would. So anyway.
My point is, yeah, same. I agree. Well, I, I didn't, wasn't surprised at the results either. I, when you try to create that kind of change, you, you can't, a survey doesn't really do it. So I would question whether we have enough time, given that it, there's no real educational per benefit to doing it, that even class size, research doesn't show that that's really has a long-term or short-term effect. There's no, you know, I mean, they're all the things we keep talking about. And if, at the moment, if our focus is really personalized learning, and we've been focusing on facilities for a while, it just feels to me like, and people are getting it, you can see all that in the, in the comments. They're getting that we're moving in this direction and there's questions about it, and I like the questions about it. That, because it's going to affect my child, I'm not sure. That's good comments. That's good complaints to get in a change process. So I just feel like at this time, like, you know, Stephanie said, is it worth it? I, I'm just not hearing enough support for why would we now throw something else into the equation when we're really trying to do quite a bit of change in this district around how we teach kids at, no matter how you configure the grades, and change around how we even, you know, compensate our staff. There's just a lot of change going on. And so then, when we look at a referendum, we would have to go and do a lot of education around just the referendum. And I would question, given that there's already a history of we tried this and didn't want it before, I guess I would question why we would go down that road again, too. I'd rather concentrate on, given the survey results, there just wasn't, there's just too many negatives in there. And it would take a lot of research and time, in my mind, to get it right, to get this change, which I don't think we have. I think that we are on a journey right now to figure out, based on our facility needs, how best to progress with the referendum process. Complicating that, to me, I think is going to be difficult. It's summer. It's not like we can start any process now, in the middle of the summer. So, you know, if we were to move forward, I would again want to know how, how and when and details, how you get to people. And that means the board can't, when would the board even make this decision? And that means the board can't, when would the board even make this decision? I can't see August being, that's too soon. But we wouldn't have time to do any kind of research with parents in the summer. They're off, you know, the staff is off. Which tells me the board couldn't even make a decision until September, October later to get that kind of data. So I don't know, I personally would prefer that the board not even, that we don't go down that road at this time. Based on, not based on my, but based on what I read through all of the concerns that everybody had in the results, which were great, I can't thank the community enough for their comments to take the time to give us that feedback. It's very helpful.
So.
That's how I feel about it. I just feel like we should put the brakes on the reconfiguration, keep moving forward with the great input we got from the community on the, on the, from our advisory committee, on their recommendations on this additional work that we've been doing. Continue on our vision for graduate profile, what does that look like? To me, those are big things that are going to have a very positive impact on our schools. And with the trust you're building, Lisa, in our community, I just think we're all going in a good direction. Why complicate that if there isn't solid research that says this is really going to have a benefit for our learning in the district? Okay.
Thank you. Go ahead, Kevin.
Yeah, I would say, I think we're just starting the conversation. I don't think we need to really delve into this further at this point. We just started the conversation with the hopes for a Whittanell graduate that's really wanting to get out there, that and the survey. So I think this is just the start of the process. If we were to actually choose to go somewhere, or if we're going to do something else or stick with what we have. So I think this is a good way to start, but I think we just need to move on for now and see if we can get in the future and see how Lisa does with engaging the community further, and maybe we look into seeing if the advisory committee is going to be something to go for in this situation.
Okay. So I think that, I think we're trying to combine things that don't need combined. First off, as far as the survey goes, we need conclusive, I think we need conclusive data to indicate, to go down the path of changing the alignment, and we don't have that. Since it's inconclusive, to me, that's conclusive to not change. I think that's kind of what Luanne was getting at, partly. And secondly, tying that to construction of the building, I think is unnecessary, because whatever we propose for a design, a plan, or whatever, to construct, if we do come up with something and go to referendum, should be, I mean, it's a school facility. It should be flexible enough to be able to adapt to a realignment of grade structures without having to do, you know, spend a ton of money and, you know, tear down walls we just built and that kind of stuff. It really should stay, the design should be flexible. So really, I don't see a sense in tying the two of them together anyway.
Because I wanted to have this conversation, because I mean, I think I, Luanne, I appreciate that, you know, the big issues that are there, and I think that the board, we are going to have to make decisions, but as I said from the beginning, my goal was to not leave any stone unturned throughout the whole process, so we can stand tall and say, we did explore that, and this is what we decided, and now we're moving on. So that this is a very healthy conversation, yep.
Yeah, I was going to add, I'm glad we did the survey, I'm glad we asked the question. But.
But everything else we're doing, does it address the thought out there that students at one school, one elementary school, did it get a different educational experience than students at another? And then, when they both combine at the middle school, are they at differing levels? There's that perception out there. Does everything else we're talking about address that or fix that?
Well, I've never heard any, anything to that effect.
Is it data?
Not in the whole six years that I've been here. Now, I don't have kids in the system. I'm just saying, as a community member, out and about, and I'm involved in the community, I've never heard any complaints about one school better than the other.
I didn't say complaints, I said, there's a conversation about differences, and you can see at the.
I haven't, I mean, I haven't heard.
I know, I get that. I'm just saying, there is, and especially when they come to sixth grade, the assimilation of the groups together, there is different strengths and weaknesses on both ends with kids coming in there. And then, plus you have groups that have already formed in each individual school at, through fifth grade. And then you merge them all together in sixth grade and expect that it's great. Whereas if you have all together throughout, it's the same group of kids going together throughout.
Those are issues that have to be addressed. There were a lot of issues, I thought, in the survey that you now can, as an administrative team, run with. I mean, whether or not we reconfigure, you're still.
I want to echo Jeff Madison's comments.
You're going to have com, yeah, you're going to have, you have to address that issue, because there's not inequities, but people might think so.
Can you repeat what Kevin said, please?
He agrees with what I said. So it's just something to consider. If we say we want what's best for our students and our kids as a whole, just saying, well, maybe not now, maybe it's okay now, then we're sticking with the old mindset of, yeah, it's all right, let's just do this other stuff. If there's a way to fix it now and have it right going forward, there's a better way, why don't we do that?
But I haven't heard you say there's anything wrong, other than a perception. There's nothing educationally different.
But Dr. Olson said we need to do more research and go to districts that have gone through it to see if there is a difference. There may be. We don't have enough data. So the reason we're talking about it tonight is, what we got back was inconclusive. We haven't done more research. We should do more research to find out if it makes sense to do it. If our staff is saying it would be easier to collaborate with the other fourth-grade teachers if we're in the same building, then it would give us, sorry, we would give the staff the best chance to do that by combining into one. I'm not advocating either way. I'm saying, but I mean, you can, but that's the goal. We're sitting here saying there isn't a reason to do it. There may be, we just haven't done the research yet.
I thought I heard Dr. Olson say that there is no educational research that has shown any configuration really has any impact on learning. Didn't you say that?
In terms of, right, educational research showing that any grade configuration by itself, because there are other variables included in it. So to say what other variables would we be changing simultaneously would be unique to what our context is.
Right.
Well, you bring up some very good points, Jonathan, that my little pea brain didn't think of. And that is true, and I, we don't, maybe, maybe Edgerton kids are behind HCE, or vice versa, whatever it may be, I don't know. Can we dig, you can dig that out.
When I think.
Well, then I think, then I don't think we're doing our job, I think we would be doing our job, at least to hear that data. Because if there is inequities, maybe this is the answer, I don't know. Because we all, we all want our kids to be ready for that sixth grade or that ninth grade. And maybe this is a way to do it, and then moving forward to university.
So I think that we probably already have plenty of data, we just haven't looked at it. Because we have plenty, we track plenty of data coming from the kids out of HCE and Edgerton. And as they go through the middle school, I think it's a matter of, of, you know, of crunching the numbers to see what the differences are in middle school from kids that came from, you know, the HCE versus kids that came from Edgerton. So I think there's plenty of data there, we just have to look at.
And the one thing we need to be careful is, is not to start pointing fingers at a different staff in different buildings to say, you're underperforming, they're doing better, and then you create a dichotomy between the two schools, right? It's more of, are we servicing all the students that are getting all the same opportunities across the board? And I think that you started off with saying that we need to figure out what data we want to look at, and then start digging into it, to your point.
That's your.
It's there, but what's important to us, what do you want to see, and build out from there?
Well, you may have to start by not trying to look for something, but just see what shows up by just taking a look at, at performance numbers. Pull up all the performance numbers, for example, in sixth grade, from sixth-grade students, and start, you know, then sort them out by HCE versus Edgerton students, and then, and then look at the data to see if there is any difference between them, not, not start looking for a difference in math or a difference in reading, but see if a difference shows up.
So what do you mean?
I don't want to have a preconceived idea of what we're looking for.
What do you mean by performance numbers?
I don't know. What do they track?
So that's what we're saying. It could be standardized testing, it could be midterms, it could be finals, it could be. Okay, so you're going to look, pull all the data, research all of it, and go from, I'm asking.
What I'm saying is, we have plenty of data already. We just need to go looking at it and see what shows up, and how they, what the administrators want to, with whatever experts they want to gather around them, decides on what stuff to look at, then go ahead. I mean, there's, there's plenty of data, but again, there's, though there's lots of numbers, there's still only a finite number of tests that we collect data from.
Sure.
So it, it just really wouldn't be that hard, I don't think.
Any other ideas, thoughts, comments?
Yeah, I just want to say, I think that's a problem. Because if administration saw an issue to begin with, wouldn't you have brought that to us?
If they've looked.
Yeah, I would say, I personally have not disaggregated the data to that level. We have a lot, we have to do better with our data right now. I think we've been getting little pockets of it here and there. I would say that we haven't been doing a consistent review of what it is. I agree with John that there's data there. I do think that there is more data that probably needs to be looked at that, you know, hasn't been, not that we don't have it, it just hasn't been gathered. So I don't know, that's, for example, programs and services. I don't know for a fact that, I could tell you when we've been looking at intervention services at both, both elementaries, the staffing is not equal in terms of students, for example, intervention services. Okay, so that's an example that I became aware of through the year. We're trying to rectify that, but clearly, if you don't have the same level of staffing, whether that's music, or intervention, or gifted intel, whatever it is, if you don't have the same level of service being provided, there's, you would expect there to be some differences to show up. So I'm just starting to, you know, touch on that. Now, that we can rectify without new grade configurations, I get that, but we're just at the beginning of seriously looking at the true, true, we're very early into it. So, so from, in terms of, the thing is, is that if we find that out at the end, what limitations are there? So I think, you know, I'm hearing that we have a couple of options. One is to say the data isn't conclusive and just leave it there. One is to say, the data's not conclusive, so we're going to study it and try to make a decision before the referendum. The other option is, the data's not conclusive, we're going to continue to study it. The referendum isn't contingent upon that, but we've not closed the door on a different grade configuration, which could happen before or after that question is into the future. We've not closed the door on it. So I think that there are really three options to look at in terms of that. It's hard to determine, it's hard to put a finite amount of time on doing data to collection, because you don't know what you're going to find out. It might uncover some other things that we need to do some more analysis of, like, whoa, that exists, we didn't realize that. Let's say we do start to look at differences in students, and now we're like, wow, that's interesting, didn't know that, right? And then all of a sudden, we've given ourselves two months to come to a decision on something that's a pretty big decision. So I, you know, I see those three options. So you can flip a three-sided coin, or you can, I just need some direction in terms of what next steps are, yep.
So to your point, if there are inequities, those are still going to be addressed. This isn't our only opportunity, reconfiguring, Jonathan, to do that. So I'm saying, I'm not aware of some, but if there are some out there, those should be addressed. And they can, we can still say we're not going to reconfigure our elementary schools at this time. We looked at it, to put more time and effort into it, could very well easily delay the work we're doing in the facilities we're trying to decide on, the additional, putting additional costs into additional plans at this time. We just may not want to do that at this time and move forward on personalized learning, move forward on our fixing up the facility needs that we've already put out there, and then move forward on our graduate profile vision. You see what I'm saying?
She's waving, we don't put her in.
So those are, I still see, I don't, I appreciate all the comments coming up here, and let's, let's move together in a way that meets all those needs, because we, we'd have to have a lot more conversation about what happens in our elementary school, and what's different and what's the same, what should be different and what should be the same. Because in my mind, there should be some autonomy in how each building is run. There should be some. And then there's our some, some obviously skills and abilities that all kids need, no matter where they go to school. So it's a much more complicated question.
But Luanne, I don't think that's a sound argument. I think if we are, if we need to make this decision prior to referendum.
What decision?
What you said, that we can come back and visit it later.
We can. I mean, if we want.
But if, but if we're going to, if we're going to go forward with a referendum, why wouldn't we change or make the changes to our facilities with this either yes or no?
I'm saying that we would be, let me clarify that, and I'm saying that we would be saying no. Any board in the future could open it up again.
Of course.
Like we did, now we're looking at it again when it was what, six or seven? I'm saying that, I'm not saying, I'm saying we would put it off the table.
So evidently, my, my point must have had no traction over separating the two, because I think whatever we build should be, if we build, should be flexible enough to adapt to a reconfiguration, should we so decide, so.
No, and I think you're agreeing with Dr. Olson, because in her statement, she said, keeping it separate, not combining it. So, no, you were supporting her, and I don't think anybody else is saying we need to combine it together.
So I don't, I don't think we need a decision then on that, prior to going to referendum, is what I'm saying.
Some people think it may make more sense to have a decision beforehand. It doesn't have to be tied together, but some people have said they think it makes more sense to do it, so.
Because I think questions would come up at this point, because we put it in the survey, if we don't make a decision, one way or another.
Well, and if one quarter of the response, if it's basically broken down, 25 to almost, 25, 25, 25, 25, and 25% said they want more information, if we drop it now, 25% of the people that took the survey, we're just ignoring them, by not giving them more information.
I could, I could easily justify that a good number of parents were not interested in any change. You know, 25, or whatever, whatever those percentages are. I think there was enough dissent to say that at this time, we're just not going to move forward with that configuration.
So 30% said no.
Right. I would say that's a pretty strong percentage of people.
21% said yes, 27% said that they'd support either way.
I have the data. I'm just saying, I think, I personally would have no problem going back to the people that want more information saying, there was just enough dissenting, you know, to not explore it at this time.
Jackie, please.
I just wanted to add that aside from intervention, things that you could consider when you're looking at different grades being at, you know, all of one grade being at a building, is that, you know, programs that you bring in, would allow you to bring in speakers and artists that really are focused for a particular grade span, rather than trying to find something that fits the needs of a kindergarten at the same time as a fifth grader. So, you know, services as well, when you're training people on some of the special services and responding to trauma and things like that. What you would do at one grade is going to be very different than at an upper grade, so that would allow you to really specialize at each building in your approach. Same thing with PBIS. You know, we're using PBIS at both buildings, but there are ways that you could adjust it for the younger kids versus the older kids versus the middle schoolers in the high schools. So I think those are things that we don't always think about, because they don't come up on a daily basis. But they're things to consider, and certainly would be able to address needs differently.
Okay, so.
Clear as mud, clearly.
And is it pretty conclusive that the staff thinks this is a good idea?
If you look at the desegregation of staff per parent, more, more staff were on the change it than the parents were when you brought them together. I mean, that, in my understanding from the advisory committee, because I talked with them when I came on board like last May to their committee, when they went and talked to staff, staff was not on board with a couple of different things at that time. So that, for me, is an interesting shift in staff perspective in a year's worth of time, talking to a couple of the co-chairs. But when they had those meetings about different grade configurations, whether it was fifth grade up to middle school or whatever it was that the advisory committee looked at, they said the staff was not open to any change. So I thought that was, while they don't have survey data that was based on their holding meetings with staff or whatever, so that's, that's what I can tell you. But the staff seemed to lean more than the parents leaned on doing some type of shift.
So the conversation and the thought was to potentially convene an advisory committee to review this and determine an option to bring a charge back to. We surveyed the community, we surveyed parents, we surveyed staff. This is what we've gotten back to say, this is what they think we should do. It wouldn't have, maybe wouldn't set a cap on how many people can participate. It would be anyone that liked to participate, as long as you can make two-thirds of the meetings or three-quarters, whatever you set, they can join and they can participate, and then if they've met that quota, they can participate in the final vote to decide what they bring back to the board. So that's an idea, to have the conversation going, so that it's not just on the administration to do it, but there's still research going on. Thoughts on that?
I don't see how that could happen by August.
Well, that's, you're right.
I mean, and they still will need more information. We were almost to the end of June. Yeah, I don't know, I don't, I don't see that happening in two months.
While I would be open to doing it, I don't think there's support on the board. So, why would we go the next thing? Maybe there is, I just don't see it.
And I'm with Quinn. It's not, I'd be very open to doing it. It's simply the timing. Because I'm all about finding better ways to do things. I am. I'm big on continuous improvement. It's just the timing that troubles me. And all of the things we're trying to bring the community, all of the visions we're trying to create. For me, it's that, actually.
I, I, I'm sorry. Are you done? I, I'm not for or against. I think Jackie made some good points. I, I, I would lean more on the side of what the opinion of the parents are, but I would like to make sure the parents expressing, that, that express their opinions have all the information from these discussions. And that we try to address concerns that they would have for drop-off times and all that kind of stuff to make it logistically feasible for them to have a, you know, a realistic household schedule, you know what I mean? So, there's, there's definitely pros and cons, you know? So, I'm not for or against. I think that we just need more exploration and then to make sure that the parents get more education on the pros and cons.
So, consider looking into it. So, I continue researching it, see what data's out there, see what information's out there, and then just keep the board up to date with memos or information along the way.
That's right.
And then if we need to do an advisory committee, we can, but obviously it wouldn't be with a decision back by September. It may run concurrently with whatever referendum planning is going on.
I'm sorry, where, where are you?
They come after that.
Are we in agreement with that, that we continue to research it? I'm, I'm not. I'm just saying I'm not.
Okay, we can vote if we'd like, but based on just the conversations here, there are at least three, if not four, that have voiced an interest in researching, get more. So, we can take a formal vote. We're not taking a formal action with this. They're just going to continue looking into it, researching it like they would as part of the overall process anyway, so we're not asking them to do anything different.
So, I don't think we can vote. This is just a report and discussion. It's not an action item.
Well, I wasn't saying vote tonight. I'm just answering Luann's question.
All right.
I think you can quote, do a verbal, I don't think it's called a vote, but a verbal, just like, you can do that. It's not called a vote, but you can just give a verbal. If you believe it's worth the time to, to move forward with it because waiting, every two weeks here, because I mean, I owe something back to the people who attended. And I feel like, and that's why I didn't send something last week because I wanted to have this conversation with the board. I owe them something back in terms of, we are moving forward, we're not moving forward, we might be moving forward. I think that they need to know that because that was part of this thing. And so, I, I don't want to, they just need to know where that status is. And so, I would like some, I mean, we're not making, if there's like, hey, we're going to further research it, we may get down the research road and decide this is too overwhelming or whatever. And it'd be great if that group of people came up with that rather, I mean, in terms of where that is, if, if like, while there's a lot of stuff out here and it isn't conclusive or whatever it is. I also don't have any preconceived ideas about what we might uncover. It's a process is what it is. But I do, I feel like I need, I, I need to owe stakeholders a response to what the survey result means.
I'm in favor of pressing forward, not with grade configuration, but with research towards what it would look like, what it would mean, find some more answers for the twenty-two percent and for the rest of us. That's my opinion.
So, based on that, we have at least four that have.
Well, I'm, I'm rethinking mine here. Because I think that, I think that we have to have overwhelming evidence, overwhelming evidence that this makes a difference academically. Because the voice that's going to, if we do say we want to move this forward, the voice that's going to come and talk to us is the voice that does not want it.
Absolutely.
And I don't see that happening. So, I really, while I, while I think there's benefits to it, I, I'm, I'm against it because I don't think it's going to be overwhelming evidence that we academically need to do this. So, I'd be against wasting, not wasting, investing any more time.
Stephanie?
I need more compelling evidence, one way or the other. Because the only way that you're going to get that is to continue looking at the question. But I also am aware that even if we have compelling academic interests, why we should do it one way or another. That doesn't matter to the parents who have to completely rearrange their schedule to get their kids to school. Because if it's causing a big enough of an impact on their parents, it's not going to make sense. Even if it's academic or better, it's still not supporting our goodness. So, I would be looking for not only a, a more academic compelling reason, but I would be looking for that community's important piece that's overwhelming in favor of people that are going to be in, to be, to potentially be here to discuss with.
Okay, so I hear you.
So, again, they need more information. But you know, like you've ever told me, that we have more than barely a third of what our population is in a responsive survey. So, with that comes other ways than surveys trying to tease that data and information out.
Okay, all right.
I just think there's too much other stuff we're working on right now to take this one on. I still, I still feel that way. I know there's unanswered questions. But when you look at the data, only eighteen percent are even interested in the reconfigure, and thirty-two percent of parents, that's Stephanie's. I, I mean, there's a big difference there between what parents want. So, the data does give us some information. The survey gives us some information.
So, where did you see the eighteen, oh, you.
It's broken down. You can look at the parents.
By parents, you mean parents?
Maintain the current. Thirty-two percent, that's parents on the very right.
Got it. Just the parents.
Just parents.
Okay.
That's the highest group. Well, parents and all.
Okay.
Nancy?
I'd like more information.
Okay. Kevin? Would you like more information or you want to drop it for now?
I'm down, I'm down for, I'm, we can keep pushing this topic. Obviously, if everything's inconclusive, I think we've spent probably too much time going around in circles saying we don't know. Obviously, we can continue to ask and that's fine. I don't mind asking parents and trying to pull them more. But with as inconclusive as it is with the minimal research and what we have, I don't see the point in really going further at this point. I would delay it if anything and say, it was a thought, we didn't get a sounding response one way or the other, so we're going to keep delaying this.
Okay. And I'm in favor of getting more information now while P, while it's on people's minds, while we did this, we're having a group. So, I think we should continue to research and see what data there is, what information there is, and then bring it back at an appropriate time and discuss.
So, four beats three. How about Lisa?
I'm not surprised. We ref, we reflect the community. So, I think you're taking on a divisive issue and I would just caution you on that.
I don't think it has to be divisive. I think we just need to get more information to make sure that we know why we're staying this way.
Right.
Or why we're changing.
Because it's going to be divisive. You're going to have to have a compelling.
And I think either way, it will be divisive. So, the more information, more data that you can provide either way will help that argument.
Absolutely.
I mean, if we go and talk to districts that made the switch and wish they wouldn't, that adds to the why we're changed. You know what I'm saying? Like, I think that it adds to it. I, I'm not going to go crazy and spend twenty-four hours a day doing it, but we will start to at least get some initial things. And if it's looking like, we'll, we'll keep, we'll, we'll monitor it. I just wanted to have some, yep.
Okay. So, then B, Forward Thinking Regional Student Center.
Wanted to share with the board, I think I, I may have mentioned a little bit, but in terms of Greendale, Whitnall, and Greenfield, and Jackie has been involved in it, and Lynn is, is starting to come on board with her new role. We've been meeting and we have a meeting that we're putting together next week with business managers about, we started to look at two things with some populations of our students who aren't currently being educated in our buildings. Our CISA and other organizations provide some educational options for students who, being in their building is not working for them. Whether it's students with disabilities, whether if it's students who have alternative needs, whatever that might be. And so, I think collectively, we just happen to be mentioning, you know, there is a price tag that goes with that in terms of, of, of a piece of it, in terms of overhead, what that means. But I think our conversation was a lot more on the educational piece of it that students are provided. So, there is a population of students right now that, the, the group that we're looking at is specifically grade seven through twelve, who are students with a disability, most of them with emotional, not necessarily learning disabilities, who are struggling being in a normal school environment. And so, they're being sent to the, to CISA to be educated. It's a, it's a half-day program. It's based on earning credits and seat time, and then they earn their high school diploma. So, we looked both at the fiscal impact of that, but also I think we really spent a lot of time, and the most exciting part to most of us was on the educational part of it. Is our goal is to transition them back into a school when appropriate because all of them graduate and work in society. And so, the more that we have them in an isolated, that doesn't look like that. And I also think that there are some stereotypes that go with that. You know, I think all students want to be accepted and feel like it. So, if they can have a program in a building where they feel like they're going to that versus they get on a bus here and are transported either by parents or some type of transportation to that facility. And so, whether it's the parent or the student saying, I go, where do you go to high school? Like, go to this, you know, program, wherever it is. We feel like we could probably provide them some of the services, both from pupil services, whether it's social workers or whatever, a lot of them are needing having that, having a behavioral specialist work with them. And as we gradually transition them, as they earn some of those pieces, they can take electives that just are not available to them, whether it's an art class. And so, a lot of them, let's say they are very interested in art, that's just not an option. It's, you know, it's working through credits to just get that diploma. So, I think we, think we can be more flexible in terms of having students go in and out of that program in terms of the needs are than a per seat. Jackie, do you recall what the per seat is right now at that program?
It's just about fifteen thousand for our high school students. The middle school students, although we currently weren't utilizing the slot, it's closer to thirty-five thousand.
Yeah. And that does not include transportation, correct? So, that's another, can probably double that per student. So, we think by the three of our schools combining together and providing programming here, transportation would be, would be considerably less, and we feel that the educational programming could be that. So, this, we've been working on this concept for a while. We think it's got both educational and fiscal impacts in terms of providing that. We think parents will be much more, you know, accepting of the idea because their child is still attending a school building in terms of that. We have a lot of, and so, we would be the host of it. We have a couple of physical spaces here that we could do. The other two districts, especially Greendale, is struggling with space right now. And so, this is our first venture that we're going to sort of create, which is a sixty-six oh-three agreement, and we would be the fiscal agent of that. We would share the cost of what that, the teacher, the, all of those things are across the board. And we would all commit to having a three-year as compared to going to the CISA for those same services. And so, we would do it grade seven through twelve. We sort of went through some of the planning, what that looks like and all of that. So, we're looking at doing, we're, right now, we don't have a, a name for it, but I just called it a regional center because it's our three school districts that are involved in Forward Thinking that would come together with that. And we started talking already about other possibilities to sort of regionalize some of those services, both that have fiscal and educational benefits for our students in terms of, because we are geographically very close, it makes sense for us to do that. I wanted to give you an update. We're meeting with business managers next week, and so, we will come in front of the board again in terms of the sixty-six oh-three because we'll be the fiscal agent for that and get more information. But I wanted to give you sort of a, a heads up on that, that, I mean, what, what the plans are and what we're looking at in terms of that, as the other superintendents are doing with their boards also.
So, we have the space now, but how does that look going forward?
Yeah, I think in the high school, I mean, it's one of those things, I think we have a couple of different areas. We have like three spaces we were looking at. One is in the front of the building in the high school, the space that's there. The other was sort of now that we're moving our pupil services out into the buildings, that whole space there sort of becomes vacant. And there was a couple of other spaces on the, on the lower level that we were looking at. So, you're right, as we move forward. So, we want to see how well the, the concept works. We believe for three years out, we'll be okay. That space that we're, we were looking at is not taking it from anybody else. It's vacant for the most part in terms of all of those spaces or will become that.
What space is that?
Room two eighty, which when you're going downstairs, when you enter the front entrance and you go downstairs, there is, if you look to your left from the stairway, there's a classroom there.
Okay.
It, it currently is only utilized for especially designed use of class and then jazz band.
Jazz band, yeah.
So, those teachers have been notified to consider what other options that they might use in the coming school years. But it's really, it used to be a, a study hall space years ago, but it's relatively unused in the last ten years.
That's basically one classroom sized, basic classroom sized.
It, it's a large classroom, so it'll offer some flexibility. And then with, with this, the drop-off and pickups being slightly different than a traditional high school time, you know, you're coming in the front entrance and will easily be able to meet them there and then take them to the classroom, which will be a, you know, a short distance from the entrance.
Just, I guess I can't recall, I don't know what it looks like from the outside. Is there actually a window in that space or is it a dungeon?
Isn't a window in that space. There's another, there's two doorways, but there is no window. But in order to utilize the space, we, we have a little bit of work to do to get some proper validation of things in there.
Okay. Thanks.
Well, that's incredible collaboration. It really is. And I gotta thank Luann for getting Forward Thinking started. I mean, that, that was unbelievable and we're, we're seeing some really great benefits and thank you for taking the board.
It's been exciting to sort of collaborate, I think.
It is. It's great.
Yeah.
Any other thoughts? Okay.
Well, I do. So, you're drilling down this data. When, when are we going to find out what question got the most stars?
Look behind you. We've got a, we haven't got.
I want a blue ribbon. Number nine.
We got to get that out, sorry.
Do we read Mike?
Yeah, we won.
Yeah, but he was.
It was.
No, 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 no.
He probably answered the star on your tweet.
Answers we want. Business manager's not fudge.
That's the code, the marker you were carrying.
I want to bring up my question, probably got my answer, probably got the most, I don't, we want to bring that up.
Might you pay me to put stars on it?
All right, on to item seven. It's action items. Seven A is Act thirty-two, the twenty sixteen seventeen energy exemption projects with TRAIN. Reminder that this is just scope one and agreement one. Any additional questions?
I, I'd just like to note that, that TRAIN representatives are here. Joe Schmidt on the left, Jeffrey DeBoer in the middle, Adam Souter with the ruptured Achilles, thank you.
I was chasing a mountain lion.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, right. So, your golf game didn't work out for you, is that the deal?
I had to stop.
So, they are, they are here to, from a follow-up from June twelfth to answer any specific questions. You'll notice just as a difference from the last time, I know we just asked for questions, but just as a difference from the last meeting, scope two has been corrected, scope three is corrected, cleaned up, run through their processes over at, at TRAIN. And so, if you have specific questions about scope, we'll go that way for this, this meeting. So, yeah.
Related to.
To, to scope two and three, I'm going to say. I'm just laying that out there now. To scope two and three, not for one.
So, let's, if no questions on scope.
Sorry, sorry. A, A is, is one, is amendment one and two.
Okay, because it's.
A is amendment one and two. It's the net zero piece here. It is the movement of the three twenty-five.
So, she doesn't.
Oh, that's not, I, I thought A was.
Yeah, the agenda is, it's fine. Okay, then we'll include.
It's just link.
Scope one with it. That's fine. Scope one and two. So, then I guess we'll.
Okay. So, if you, if, if scope two is included in this discussion, then I have a question.
Go ahead.
For the TRAIN gentleman. So, I see that we now are back to two elevators in the high school. That's good. But I noticed that the lighting changed in general. I'd like to know why we went from, on a whole bunch of classrooms, why we went from three lamps at fifteen watts, I assume that's each, not per fixture. Three lamp fifteen watt fixtures with their LED, of course, but with a retro fit with a centering kit, why we went from that to, to twelve watt fixtures in all these classrooms. It seems like that's about, if, if watts is anywhere proportional to lumens, you can draw that kind of proportion, then you're talking about cutting the lighting in half from each fixture nearly.
So, the answer to that is our goal to empower lighting. So, because the LEDs, the output is, is so much greater than the lumens, not necessarily that the wattage is, making sure that the classrooms are not overlit at all or not underlit, finding the balance. So, the lighting professionals that we engage after they review all the classrooms and then the rooms that we're working on, that's been the recommendation. So, we're trying to balance that energy savings with the right amount of.
So, granted, doing twenty-four watts per fixture is definitely going to be cheaper and provide quicker energy savings than forty-five watts per fixture. and provide quicker energy savings than 45 watts per fixture, assuming the fixtures last as long. If they last half as long, then we're just about back at a net zero balance. But how do the lumens balance out for what we have now compared to what these two different fixtures would be?
Sure.
Because I certainly don't want worse lighting. I understand overlighting, you know, you have to go into class with sunglasses, which I assume some kids want to do anyway. But, but, and the other thing is, I mean, what about fixture cost? I mean, I'm sure you guys aren't going to be taking a loss on it, but we were trying to get the most, you know, bang for the buck here, and, and not necessarily just a greater profit margin. So my concern is, I see the, the wattage cut by nearly half, same number of fixtures going in. I just want to know what's happening with the money and with the lumens.
Sure. So two things.
And the reliability of the fixtures, I'm sorry.
Sure. No, so I'll answer the liability one first. So right now, the LEDs are basically 10 years, probably over 10 years as far as their lifespan. These fluorescent fixtures are usually about three or five, especially balanced right now with only one, two.
I'm not talking about fluorescent. I mean, the, the difference in, in longevity or reliability between the two different types of LED fixtures, from the original amendment two-
Sure.
And the refurbished amendment two.
No difference.
So they're, they should be about the same?
Correct.
In, in predicted reliability and longevity?
Yes. So the, the manufacturer warranties on those fixtures would be the same between the two.
Was it 10 years, or is it?
It's, I'd have to actually go back and double check that. I don't have that statistic on me right now.
Okay. So, but you say, you're, you're telling us that they are the same in length-
Correct. We, we wouldn't, we wouldn't come back, no, we don't, we don't want to provide you an inferior product, because we as TRAIN and our lighting member have the same.
So as far as cost for the fixtures go, if these other fixtures with only two lamps and a 12 watts each, if they're cheaper, can, are we, are we adding more work?
No, actually, I, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Are we adding more work to get done for the same amount of money, or are we just giving a higher profit margin if these are cheaper?
No, no, no higher profit margin. We'll be doing those, taking some retrofit kits and actually doing new fixtures in areas that were coordinating a pod on the first floor, to make sure that you get new fixtures in rooms that are going to have radiant ceilings now, versus what would have been retrofit kits and pent-up fixtures. So no cost change.
In what ceilings, I'm sorry?
What's that?
You said something about in the, in what ceilings?
Rooms 150 and 158, there's about 26 to 28 new fixtures that we're swapping out. District isn't seeing any money moving. It's just a matter of making sure we provide the right product in those rooms.
So what's the benefit of the new fixtures versus retrofit?
The benefit of the new fixtures is that it has no remaining components of the, you know, old wiring, old housing, anything that was potentially incompatible with, would be incompatible with the grid. Now we're bringing in new fixtures that will be compatible with a new ceiling, making sure that you have long-lasting product or system.
So in those rooms, there's new ceiling. So that's what you said about ceiling?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
The ceiling will be-
All right. Thank you.
Go on.
Yeah, there was a lot of, I don't know if you guys know, there was a lot of change between amendment two and this revised amendment two.
Okay. So anybody else have any questions? No? Okay. Then a motion to approve, seven A.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, seeing none, motion carries. Item seven B is the Act 32, 2017-18 Second Performance Contract with TRAIN. This is scope and agreement number three, correct?
Correct.
Any additional questions? Okay, then a motion to approve.
Rock and roll.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, seeing none, motion carries. Item seven C is the Act 32 Resolution. Any additional questions? Seeing none, a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item seven D is Core Four Charter Renewal. Any additional questions?
I'd just like to note that, that if you read the updates, we did get an answer from DPI about what, what needed to be changed. Last time Lori did not have an answer, we do have the answer, and I just wanted to point that out.
All right, motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, opposed, none, motion carries. Item seven E is Early Entrance Policy. Any additional questions? All right, motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Is he in a honky-tonk, or what's the deal here?
Give it, give it to Kevin.
Seeing none, motion carries. And then item seven F is 2017-18 Preliminary Budget. Any additional questions? All right, motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Item seven G is Employee Handbook. Any additional questions?
Is that one?
Yes.
You're going to go through that and kind of look at the formatting on some of the issues, some of the paragraphs kind of ran together and things like that. All right, then I won't point them out.
Thanks.
Okay. All right, so a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second? Flip?
I'll second it.
Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, seeing none, motion carries. Okay. Item eight is Items for Future Consideration. As a reminder, no discussion will actually be taken at this time. Do any board members have topics they'd like to discuss in the future?
I'd like to discuss getting a, something I've been trying to do for four years, get a survey to graduating seniors, first-year graduates, third-year graduates, fifth-year graduates, or some arrangement like that, so we can start having some data that gives us feedback on what we're doing, as opposed to all this data that just establishes our practice. Let's get some feedback incorporated into our practice.
So a discussion about postgraduate surveys?
Graduate and postgraduate surveys. I want to include the seniors in that.
We currently do a survey with the seniors.
Haven't seen any of it.
So I, I just wanted to point out, and if you're thinking about it, it would be extending looking at, if you're trying to track what actually happens to them, you know, as they're in college, if they stick with it.
And I'd like-
That we don't have, but we do have a survey that looks at seniors.
Then I would like to see what it is we ask, because maybe we should be asking some more. And, and then extend that to graduates.
Okay. We'll put it on there. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Item nine is Board Member Announcements. Anyone have an announcement? Excellent. Okay, then I will now take a motion to adjourn into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.851C to discuss personnel and superintendent valuation.
Second. So moved.
Second.
Second. Roll call votes. So John?
Aye.[1779.84]